It is 6 o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening? I know one was brought forward to add an agenda item for discussion and possible action on how to do the superintendent eval for the 22-23 school year. So let's add that as... 9P? Yep. Were there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll look for a motion in a second to make those changes.
We'll make a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
Okay, motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we will look for the approval of the agenda.
Move we approve the agenda?
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is public input. None? We'll move on to recognitions and good things happening. Thank you to the staff members working tirelessly over the summer months. Your efforts and diligence are noted and appreciated. Also, congratulations to our preschool program teacher, Tanya Keim, in receiving a four-star Parent Aware Scholarship Award. That is another $15,000 this year for early learning scholarships. Thank you, Tanya. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the June 21st, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Did anybody see any issues or any corrections? Next is treasurer's reports, July bills and June wires, the June treasurer's bank report and reconciliation, budget summary, and student activity funds. Anything? Nope? Okay. Fundraisers, we will look to approve the Activity Department fundraiser for driveway painting, also the class of 2023 frozen pies and gourmet candy sales from September 19th to October 3rd. Donations, for the 2022 Donation City for Summer Rec, the City of Leroy, $3,000, Alter Metal Recycling, $620 and 308, First State Bank, $250, Next Generation Pork and Herdstar, $200, Grass and Sun Seeds, $100, Hefty Sea Company of Leroy, $100, Leroy Lumber, $100, Colleen Jennings Real Estate, $100, Jacobson Enterprises, $100, Spring Valley Vet Clinic, $100, Hint Funeral Home, $100, A Gift to Gab, $100, Ostrander Care and Rehab, $100, Suites Hotel, $100, Wheeler Electric, $50, Cray Insurance Agency, $50, Steve Luning Trucking, $50, Wildwood Grove Senior Living, $50, First National Bank, $50, Evans Printing and Publishing, $50, Meg's Hair Care, $25, Creating Wellness Chiropractic, $25, Northern Country Co-op, $25, Odie Country Meats was $25, NT Woodworking, $25, and $100 credit office shirts from Ed's Floral. Next, we have personnel, the hiring of Haley Hungerholt for a Cardinal Kids worker effective June 1st, 2022 at $13 an hour, the approval of hiring of Candace Hansen, Summer Rec. We actually did approve her last month, but the number was at $9 and it should actually be $9.25. We are also going to look to approve the resignation of Kelly Masters as Assistant Junior High Football Coach, approval of hiring Nikki Bergen as Assistant Activities Director per the EA Master Agreement at $1,461 a year, and the approval of hiring Trevor Carrier as Student Services Advisor Activity Director, summer contract extension for the amount of $3,420.60 at a daily rate of pay of $285.05 for 12 days. Jen, we've never done one of these. The contract extension, does that have to go through the LOE like they're good with it too, or is that just something completely separate from the contract?
Completely separate, but I did go through them just to make sure.
Okay, and they gave you the thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Okay.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Cass. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We do not have policies to review this month. We did not have enough to make a quorum to be able to, so we're going to bring them back in August. So there'll be more in August for us to review. Next, we have the approval of the 2022-23 School Board meeting dates. Jen sent this in her, or Tiff sent it along with the updates. The only thing I saw that we're missing is we have to do the election canvassing after the election in November, but not knowing everybody's schedule, let's just not add it. If there were no other issues or anything, we will look for an approval of the dates.
I'll make a motion to approve those dates.
Motion by Cass.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the Bank Authorization Resolution. Jen, do you want to touch on this one?
You bet. Basically, if you look at your notes, and I'm going to find it here, basically it's telling us, telling all of you in our community that, yep, we have banking that happens here at our school. We are going to be writing checks, we are going to be paying bills and invoices and things like that. What this is doing is authorizing the school to use the money that we have in our accounts with specified people on your bank account to use that money. Again, certain people are on checks, on bank accounts, things like that, and this approval tonight, as we've done every year, as you have done historically throughout the years, you want that bank authorization from the school board.
There's no questions. We look for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the Bank Authorization Resolution.
Motion by Tim. Actually, this needs to be a roll call. It's a resolution, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So Cassidy?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next is the approval of the, I'm guessing this should be first reading, of the 22-23 Pool Employee Handbook.
If I could just make a couple comments of that. You may recall last month, we brought it back and just did a quick review of it. We wanted to just make sure that we had all the language accurate, including consistencies in disciplinary pieces in there. So as you can see, those are all now the same. And we had a couple, and it was great actually talking to Lindsay. Lindsay's here tonight, but she had some really good ideas on what should and shouldn't be in that handbook. And so, yeah, I think it looks really good and I would highly recommend approving for this first reading.
If nobody has any questions or corrections, we look for a motion to approve. Okay, I have a motion by Dave. Second by Cassidy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the first reading of the 2022-23 Student Handbook. Aaron, was much changed. I didn't see a whole lot of changes.
No, just what we've talked about in the past, a little tweaks here from our policy committee stuff, like the dress code tweaks and stuff, nothing.
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of the 22-23 Student Handbook.
Okay, motion by Cassidy.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the 20, first reading of the 22-23 Activities Handbook. Aaron, do you know if there was much changes in that one?
No, the only thing we're, we really have been working on, and it's just, literally, I think it's every year, is just eligibility piece. We've been doing some research, calling around, because we just are finding inconsistencies with first semester and second semester when you come to grade el, basically the grade eligibility, oh, sorry, I'll back up, with grade eligibility if you fail or stuff like that, and when you sit out and stuff like that. So we are, we put stuff in there, so we're, I think it's solid. I said, let's just get this out for the first reading, but that'd be the only thing if I came back before the second reading, but I'd let you guys know, or Trevor would let you guys know. But nothing, nothing too different other than we're just trying to get a fair and accurate, consistent eligibility through all seasons. Because it's just with spring sports and then going into summer, you could take summer school and then that makes up your grades for the fall, but then if you did it first semester, you don't have that same opportunity. So we're trying to, we're trying to make it fair and consistent for all athletes and activity people through the whole year. So that would be the only really change, I think.
If nobody has any questions or say anything, we look for a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll make a motion for the first reading of the 22-23 Activities Handbook.
Motion by Tim. Second by Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the first reading of the 22-23 Faculty Handbook.
I'd say the biggest change is, so we have gone to our win time every, we do missing assignments every week now. So what we are, we are going to, and this is coming from the staff, so it should, and I'll be able to, between me and the help of Trevor with doing some other things, we'll monitor the grades, the grade books should be updated by Monday, Monday because they get their missing, no, Tuesday, Tuesday, because Monday or Wednesday morning, kids get their missing assignment sheets before they go to their homeroom or their win time. And then we've added some, you have until Friday to get this, your missing sheet signed by all the teachers in your work and then to get it returned, or there'll be some consequences on Monday and Tuesday of our sheet we're going to utilize. I'll explain the master schedule to you guys, but we're going to add something at the beginning and end. It doesn't affect the day, but there's 15 minutes before the day starts and 15 minutes at the end of the day, and I'll explain this in August, that teachers will be only in their classroom, and that's going to be where kids are going to have to go if they need extra help. I know 15 minutes sounds like a little bit, but we know where the teachers are going to be, and I'll explain more of this in August. So we're trying to get to where that grade books are every week, students get their grades every week. Trevor did a really good job of creating something this year out of the athletic department for, that we are actually going to implement schoolwide with a check-in and hold them accountable with students and teachers with their stuff handed in. So that's going to be the newest piece, it's going to be a little bit different, but it's going to be, like I said, it's hopefully now it's weekly. Now, there are going to be exceptions to the rules at some points with projects and things like that, of course, but in a normal daily routine, the teachers understand if we're going to make it, if we're going to be able to make the students successful and help them on Wednesdays, their grades have to be updated where they need to be to get that missing sheet. And I think over the last two years, we did have some technology glitches of between, we've talked about this, between an M and an I and a zero and a blank, and those things should be all, unless they're a new teacher, but we'll get that stuff, we got all these things figured out now of how infinite canvas works, what the right coding is. So I'm looking forward to being more consistent, less kids falling behind, and with the intervention time I'm talking to you guys about in August, I'm kind of excited for the new schedule and how this is going to work. So in order for, for, in order for this to work though, all pieces, including the intervention time, grading, and everything has to work together. It's not, and we will know if it's not because you can't, with how it's set up, if one piece or something missing, it will throw everything off. So that'll be what we're really focusing on this year, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Otherwise, we look for a approval for the first reading.
Make a motion for the first reading of the 22-23 Faculty Handbook.
Motion by Tim.
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the first reading of the 22-23 Emergency Handbook.
That's just updating names, basically. I don't know if we took out the, I don't know if we took it or left it in at the gas one because we don't have the anidrous plant anymore west, west of town. We used to have to have an emergency plant for that, but without that there, we don't really have a gas. That was our biggest gas leak emergency. So I don't know if we left it in there just for, so we had one in there or if we took it out. So other than that, it's just the names updated, phone numbers from new staff or stuff like that, because I think we had a new fire chief and some of those peoples, new city workers and stuff that are in there, so. Not too much.
If nobody has any questions, we look for approval of the first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the 22-23 Emergency Handbook.
Okay, motion by Cassidy.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the 22-23 Fee Structure and Food Service Breakfast and Lunch Prices.
All right. As my notes indicated, a couple things, our fee structures are going to stay essentially the same. It has been for a long time for our families. There is one minor change in the fee structure, and that is the food service. Now, I need to disclaim this because I may come back to in August because it may change yet again, but we're going to increase it by about five, or eight, at 5% for everything minus a free and reduced lunch. And that's because of, well, you hear it worldwide right now, what's going on with increases in everything. And so, we're going to do that if approved tonight. However, again, I want to really stress this, I've really tried to keep a pulse on the feds and the state government in terms of free monies, or free foods coming our way, like we have the past couple of years because of COVID. Once I find out that is for sure, it will come back to in August for a quick change. And then we'll get that out to families.
If there's no questions, we look to approve the fee structure. Motion by Dave. Second by Cassidy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of setting the threshold for superintendent monetary approval at $15,000.
This has just kind of been historical to do, and most school districts do that. You guys can place it at anywhere you want, it's just been at $15,000. As you're aware, many times I come forward to you anyway, even if it's under $10,000, just to get a general pulse and ask you all what you would like to do.
I move we keep the threshold at $15,000.
Motion by Dave. Second by Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have to approve the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election and establishing dates for filing affidavits and candidacies.
So the candidacy filing is August 2nd through August 16th, 2022, and the information will be officially posted in the official newspaper on July 13th through August 10th.
Does anybody have any questions? Otherwise, this is a resolution, we'll take a roll call. Okay, Cassidy? Chad? Tim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yep.
I vote yes. Resolution carries. Next is the discussion of the Systems Accountability and District Advisory Committee. I requested this one be brought forward, and we've kind of talked about it a little bit. Minnesota state statutes and our policy says that, you know, we have, we already have a system accountability committee, but under that, we have to form a district advisory committee. And there are certain, certain people that have to be on it. We have to make sure we have parents on it, we have staff members, we have people that are on businesses, people that are not in business. We have not gone out and advertised for this in quite a while. And it was asked at a policy meeting when the last time even the district advisory committee met, and they said it's been years. So this all ties into World's Best Workforce. And I'm not saying we're going to get people, you know, jumping through the roof to join this, but I think we need to look at putting it out there for, you know, parents, community members who would like to have a say and be involved to start doing the committee correctly.
And that's state statute?
Yes. Yeah, it's under World's Best Workforce. And they're all supposed to offer, yeah, because it, you know, it needs to be at least two-thirds of the community representative diversity, director of curriculum, principal school board member, one teacher from each building level, two parents from each building or instructional level, two residents without school-aged children, nonrepresentative local business or industry, two representatives of industry or local business, district assessment coordinator, and there's other ones. And actually, we're supposed to be holding public meetings as well, and we haven't been doing that either. So I think we need to get back going with what we need to be doing. And this is one of those things that we can, Simek just went through our strategic planning, and part of what we did, one of our goals actually was World's Best Workforce. Since Simek has never had one, that is one of our goals to start with. So, I mean, we could look at adding this to the strategic plan when we get to that point.
So this was established sometime by the board here?
The Systems Accountability Committee?
No, 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 I mean the Advisory Committee.
It's supposed to be established under, it's, the district advisory committee falls under the School District Accountability Committee.
But we've never had one.
We do have an advisory committee, and I'll pull it up here, who's all on it, but we're not following.
We have an accountability, a system accountability committee, right?
We have the system accountability.
But we don't have a district advisory committee, or did we have one at one time?
Yes, we did.
They had one at one time.
We used to have meetings down here, and then I would say it was years and years ago, and then it fell off somewhere, I'd say, five, six years ago maybe, and then it just kind of.
Yeah, so right.
And it kind of just, most of those responsibilities fell on, fell on me of just putting the World's Best Workforce together because nobody could help it.
Yeah, because right now it lists, because I mean, Dave, you're listed under the District Advisory Committee. And Cassidy, so are you.
You've tested all of them that we had.
You're, you're listed under World's Best Workforce.
All of them that we had, you were there.
At least I had 100% attendance.
Exactly. So I think, like I said, we can either motion to do something tonight, or we can go ahead and just let it kind of go until we get meet with Gary for the strategic plan, but I wanted you guys to know this. And I'll send you guys, you know, I've printed off some information, you know, the statute and stuff, if you guys want to see them, I'll send you copies of them. But yeah, we've, we haven't been doing it the way we should have been doing it for quite a while, allowing, you know, parents to have input, business members, community members. We haven't been doing that, so.
I think we need to wait till all the board members are present plus, then we can talk about with our strategic plan. I think we need to kind of dig into that. So that's, that's the way I view it.
It's a good idea. All right, then we will bring that back when it comes to the strategic plan, and we have a full board. Next, we have the discussion of Community Education Director position.
All right, so we tabled this at the last meeting, and I did some outreach to the two people that were interested in the position, and they have both declined the position. So if there's any discussion, we can surely talk about it, or we will move forward with a different posting later on.
Who was brought forward first? Was it Kelly?
Trevor and Kelly, yes, yep.
I'm guessing it'll just stay open until filled?
We did have a, we did have a board member, did bring up the possibility of talking about upping the salary, and I don't, I don't, no, Deb's not here. She had talked to us earlier about if that was something we need to look at because of all the things we do. So I don't know if that's a discussion you guys wanted to have, or just leave it as is, or, I know she's not here to fill in on that, but.
What's, what's it look like for other positions consortium wise?
I haven't checked, I haven't checked that consortium wise. I just know it's on our.
Or is it built into other positions?
Dunner.
See schedule with the AD?
Could be on our C schedule.
It's kind of comparable to the AD's.
Right.
I think it's right around like $4,000, and then summer, I think it's $1,000 is the stipend for the community ed director for the summer. So I think they both, it's a total of like five through the entire year is what we've had it at.
Want to do like a, the same but with a $1,000 sign-on bonus if we don't get anyone?
We could. It's not tied to any contracts that we have to.
Not right with me.
It's kind of its own position.
Just throwing an idea out there, if we can't get anyone, then we're kind of strapped, so.
So Kelly was one of them that was before, and I see that that didn't get brought back on the agenda for discussion this month because that got postponed till this month because some felt it wasn't advertised long enough. Has he pulled his name from the consideration?
Not on my list for.
For the, for the Student Services position.
I would say he didn't officially pull, but I'd say he didn't.
Because if he hasn't, I'd, I'd like to take action right now and make a motion that we hire him based on last, the recommendation of the committee last month.
That wasn't added to the agenda.
So you're not going to let me make a motion?
Technically, we're not supposed to. That should have been added to the changes to the agenda to bring back Kelly for that position.
And that was the, that, we're talking about the community ed director right now.
Yep, he was one of them, and that just reminded me that we had not brought that back on the agenda this month because that's the discussion last month, that position was going to get brought back this month. Because you guys felt that it wasn't advertised long enough, and we had a discussion at the board berating Kelly right in front of him, half the meeting last, last month, and now I want to make a motion that we go ahead and hire him.
But we don't have anything on here for Student Support Services, Dave.
No, that's true.
Administration was supposed to do more with that.
So through a technicality, you guys won't allow that.
What's the status, what's the status of, of that position? Let's start there. Well, I let it run now, extra month. Is it still out in the papers? How many weeks did we put out, Tiff? Is it saying that was in? It's two, it's still on all the other things. Any, any other, any other applicants that have applied? We have some applicants.
How many?
We haven't, we have, we have three applicants, two with educational experience, one without.
And the one is only interested in the subbing and not the residency pieces, the career college readiness pieces, so that's maybe.
We haven't interviewed yet, we haven't set them up, but we do have some applicants. Thought I was going to do it at the end of the month, try to get it done by August 1st.
So that'll be on the agenda next month?
That's what I would say.
Last month, we tabled the community ed director part because Kelly was wondering if there were some aspects he could do outside of the normal day. So we did table the community ed director part to bring back him and Kelly, but they both declined it. The board opted not to hire Kelly last month. That was not tabled.
The board did not opt to not hire him, the board opted to push that down the road to this month.
At the time, we said we wanted more time. We voted at that time not to bring Kelly forward, but we said it too, that, you know, if he gets what he needs, he can still come forward at a later date, was the discussion last month. And we opted to give it more time because it only had been posted for just a couple of weeks.
Okay, make sure it's on the agenda next month.
Which part, hiring of Student Services or hiring Kelly?
Student Services.
Student Services?
Kelly can be one of those.
Okay.
If the committee comes with somebody else, that's fine.
Aaron, you said we had three, two with and one was, didn't want to do the.
We had, we had one that, well, we got to interview them, but initial conversations with all of them, one was under the impression it was a lot of mostly subbing, the other one doesn't have any school experience.
Okay.
And then the other one has a teacher license.
So we got it down here that we'll hopefully have someone to bring forward in August for hire for student services.
Can I ask, can I go back to, um, community ed?
Yeah.
Can summer, and this is just, you guys don't need to answer me, but John does a summer rec.
Yep.
And he does a super job at that. Is, is there any way we can make a summer rec director, or is that just a position we just say, John, here's a stipend of this, and you, so it's not, so the community ed director wouldn't necessarily do the summer rec stuff? John would do it? Or do you guys just want to keep that under the community ed and just pay him underneath?
Oh, you're talking about separate, have one for the school year part and one for the summer?
Almost. If it worked that way, I mean, the some community, there might be some community ed through summer, but that summer rec, I mean, John does all the baseballs, the transport t, I mean, he does it all himself already. I know, I know his stipend was pretty small, I just...
And we are kind of doing that now with LeAnn, that, you know, since LeAnn resigned at the end of the year, you know, we've hired her just to be the director for the summer.
And I don't know if John would want all, and I don't know if John wants it. I'm just throwing out there that I know John does a great job with that stuff, and it's summer stuff, and it's hard to find somebody that will commit to all summer. So is that something too, if we're gonna talk about, is that something maybe we could up the stipend? And summer rec director is different than...
Community director?
Community ed, or do you want that under community ed director, or is that...
Can we just make...
I haven't even talked to, I didn't ask Jen about this. I was talking, I was thinking about John and all his stuff he was doing.
If we have an athletic director and an assistant athletic director, why don't we just make a community ed director and an assistant community ed director?
LeAnn's the assistant.
She is the assistant.
Yep. LeAnn will, I believe LeAnn's staying on as the assistant coordinator person, yes.
Okay. I didn't know that she just resigned from the community ed director position.
Yeah.
I didn't know that she resigned.
She's gonna keep the assistant part of it.
I didn't, I was just asking for the park, for the summer rec stuff, because John, I mean, or less, if it's just, can we just up his?
What, what's his stipend?
I think it's like a thousand bucks.
I think it was around a thousand or 1,200 we approved for the summer.
Just something, I mean, just something to think about for the future with him, because I, I think he does such a great job, and there's so much in those little guys that I just think it would be, I'd like to just show him our appreciation that, hey, here's me, I mean, it's not, he didn't ask me, I was, I'm just doing it on his behalf, that he does a great job with that, and there's so much to organize, that if...
Maybe we should take a look and do some research on what summer rec positions like that actually get.
Yeah. Classes and things like that, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Do you want me to ask Trevor to look into that, since it's maybe falls under that? Are you guys okay with that, if I ask him to look at?
I, I personally think, I see John all over the place. He does a great job. I think we need to kind of compensate him.
And I think that might help too, because, you know, you get some parent, like for John, you know, during the school year, he's already so busy with transportation and everything else, he's not gonna have time to take that on. But in the summer, it backs off where he would be able to have that. So I don't think it's a bad idea that separating it if we need to.
Okay. I'll bring that, I'll just, I'll have Trevor help me do some research on it, if you guys are okay with that.
Okay. So let's plan to bring that, get it, let's just say advertise it and plan to bring it back for discussion next month, just kind of see where we're at. Maybe we'll know then more if John would be willing, or if we get anybody that applies.
So you want us to post community ed director and research a summer rec, and just do research on what a summer rec person would get paid?
Yep. All right. Next, we have discussion of pool committee. This was brought up a while ago. We thought that, um, Lindsay could use some help. You know, I know years in past, they've had, kind of like community ed, you know, when we do, like, say Breakfast with Santa with ECFE, or we do community ed stuff. We have board members, community members, able to help do that. So say Lindsay's got, say she wants to do some type of fundraiser or something, it's not just all on her to do it by herself, that maybe there are others who would like to volunteer, like our community ed ECFE program, to help with that. That's kind of where we're thinking with this. That way it's not just all her by herself, and maybe try to get her some help.
So it's not really a pool committee like we had before? It's a group of volunteers to...
It's kind of like how we run ECF, it'd be, it's like a, it's a...
We had a pool board before.
Yeah, the pool...
Because I'm against that.
No, 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 no. Are you thinking more of me that helps plan stuff?
Exactly. So say Lindsay wants to do, say, the 5K. Say she wants to bring that back next year. You know, she comes to her, you know, committee and says, hey, guys, let's do this. So now she's getting, you know, let's see if we can get some community members that would want to volunteer. That way she's just not all by herself trying to do everything. No, the pool committee would not run the pool.
Because she answers to Jen and everything is...
Correct. Yep.
Originally, when I saw that idea, I thought of, you know, would we have a committee to help with all that stuff? But then as we move forward, in the next few years, we're gonna have to look at that pool operating levy again. So I didn't know if that committee gets involved, and people know more, and you get word of mouth out about the pool, what it takes. Would it help keep the pool here, I guess?
That's a good question.
I mean, Lindsay, you're here. What do you think about having some help?
I just, my question is, is like, do we have to have a committee? So if I want to host something, can I ask for just volunteers to come help it? Because like, the 5K, Tim is so good, or Timmy Tim is so good about like, hey, I got X amount of FFA workers, and that last time I did it, that was majority of the workers were all FFA. Like, she made all our FFA kids come and do it. Um, does it need to be like, does it have to be an actual group, or can it be like, hey, maybe people in the committee start, or community kind of just be like, hey, I'm looking to do this, um, who wants to help? Because I know I have gotten a lot of help that way in the past from a lot of people who do stuff like that.
And it can run that way too. Like I said, looking at, you know, kind of like I said, you know, we look at community ed, you know, we've got a committee, we have volunteers, we have helpers. You know, the pool's a big thing to run, especially when it's, you know, just you by yourself and wanting to do something. We thought that maybe this was a way to get you some help.
Is it possible to keep it under the role of like community ed? Because we run a lot of stuff through community ed. Well, old, like after school sweat. Because then doing stuff more through that community ed, ed would help too, because it can get out, I think it's out better and further than what I can do.
That's a good idea. We could add that to ECFE, community ed and pool.
I'd say, because if you're running fundraisers or like, or events, you could just kind of lump it together, and then usually the ones that are helping with that would come and help there too. That's not a bad thought versus making something that is separate.
I like that idea. So if you guys are okay with that and going with what Lindsay's thinking, yeah, we'd look at combining then, yeah, community ed, ECFE, and the pool. And we don't meet a ton, the ECFE community doesn't meet a ton.
Yeah, I would just be like, if I want to, because like, I want to try to do, there's something I'm working, trying to work with Carrie to do, and like, doing stuff like that. And I'm already a child here, and she's gonna help me with this stuff, do one thing, and see if it works, and try to get going that way with some more event stuff.
You're already working with the community ed, right?
Yes, we already do. We do absolutely.
It's like, why would we reinvent the wheel, just let her, let her do her...
And that's why I think just throwing it under that umbrella would be better.
Yep. Okay. So if you guys are good with that, we'll make a motion to add pool to the ECFE community ed committee. It is a board committee, so we have to have a motion in a second to add to it. But I mean, if you guys just want to leave it with the pool off by Lindsay by herself, that's fine too.
I guess it doesn't matter to me.
You just want to leave it as is? Okay, then we will leave it as is. All right. Next is discussion of school board and superintendent evaluations. So I sent you guys some information. Um, this will be the yearly wrap-up. We are a month behind since everything kind of got started a little late this year. Um, I emailed you guys the information again from MSBA, the forms and things. Uh, what happens is, is they all come back in, filled out a, they all get compiled together. We will have a review of it at the August meeting. So we wanted to give Jen, if there's, you know, you gave a really good presentation back in April. So we didn't know if there's anything else you would like to add to that, anything that's changed since then.
Not really, not really. But I'll, I can email you guys other things, like, for example, tonight. Um, a good example is our building and grounds committee meeting, um, where I bring forward that large document with tons of money on it, tons of cool projects. Well, it's our strategic plan at that board meeting, or at that building and grounds meeting. Um, so I can send things like that off just to refresh your memories of what we have in terms of those goals, um, to stick in your goal sheets there. And then I'll do like a small synopsis again of a couple little things, so you don't have to go through the huge packet of information. Um, but I can, I can send that off here too before, before August.
I'd say if you guys have had those...
I, for one, don't think it's necessary to go through that process again. We did it three months ago.
We actually didn't finish the process. That was the mid-year.
I would be in favor of adding Tim's thing that he brought forward and doing a, an evaluation of her in twenty, a year from now. We can go ahead with the school board evaluation next month and do a superintendent evaluation annually.
So you want the school board to evaluate ourselves, but we're not going to evaluate the superintendent?
I don't want the school board to evaluate ourselves either. That's what you want.
That's what we should be doing. We should be looking at ourselves.
I want others to evaluate the school board as well.
Okay.
But you didn't want to do that.
No, you wanted to send a survey to certain people, is what you wanted to do. But really, when it comes down to it, we're responsible to the taxpayers, not people within, I mean, some of the building are here. What it comes down to is those out there.
It's like the fox guarding the hen house, is the way I look at it. I mean, we can, we can evaluate ourselves, and it might be good, and it might be kind of meaningless too. But I, we're talking about Jen, and I don't think it's fair to her, or respectful to her, to put her through that again three months later.
We never finished the process. That was the mid-year. We never finished the process.
So what you want to do is have her do that twice a year?
That is how it is set up. That is what even Jen has it now set up with SMAC to do with Dan Armigas. Do you do a mid-year and you do an end of the year?
Well, I checked into Dan, we, there is no mid-year there.
You're not gonna, they're not gonna do one now? Because that's what we approved as a board with SMAC.
So I have a text from Dan.
Okay.
I asked, I said, tell me about your mid-year. Did I miss it? Because I heard that, oh God, Jen wasn't telling the truth at a board meeting about, I'd never heard of a mid-year, because I hadn't. And I thought, I must have missed a meeting. I feel terrible. So I texted Dan, and sure enough, he's never had a mid-year. So I didn't miss anything, so that was good. But there is no mid-year that I've heard of. So this is my first time, um, with a mid-year, but I'm hoping what I gave you was quality information and that I'm working for you. I'm not working against you, as some people may think. Um, I've heard a lot, and I'll, I'll talk about it in my report to look later.
In order to complete the mid-year, by what MSBA sends us, is that you compile it, and you actually have, it's like the teachers. You know, the teachers get a, into your evaluation that's signed and filed. We never finished ours.
The other thing we didn't do is we didn't vote on doing that as a board either. You just unilaterally decided, we're gonna do this in April.
It's in policy that the board's job is to evaluate the superintendent.
But you, you as a, as a chairman, you decide when and how. Is that the way you see the policy?
That's what we were told from MSBA, that you should be doing a mid-year and an end year.
I don't care what MSBA says. But is that what our policy is? So I've never, I've never heard of, uh, of taking a board action by just one person, uh, dictating what we're going to do. And I don't have any problem giving a, 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 a evaluation on Jen, but I'm just saying that it just seems kind of unfair to her that we're putting her through that three months after we already did it.
So I guess in the past, what we did is we were on a cycle. We got thrown off that cycle after Jeff. It was always done at the end of the school year. We did a superintendent eval. We had a, didn't matter whether it was open or closed meeting, it was up to...
That's more typical at the end of the school year.
Which was either in July or August when we did it. Yep. So we would do our evals, and we would meet and talk. Um, so now, some schools do do a mid-year. I guess I would like to just get back onto at least the yearly schedule and combine both the goal, um, setting, and do a review on the goals. But I still like the other evaluation that we did, because it really let the person being evaluated know what they were really doing well, um, and the things they needed to work on. It was all constructive criticism. We never had any issues with it before.
I'm okay with an annual, annual evaluation. No issues with that. It's twice in a year that I would have any issues with.
So what was the outcome of the last evaluation then? What was the board, what was the board consensus? What was the final board compiling of all their opinions?
Positive.
No.
You probably have a negative opinion, but you didn't state it.
At that time, no. But that's part of the process. I mean, we started this back in, what, I sent you guys an email, what, February, March? And it said right there and then that, you know, you finish it out at the end of the year. And this is the end of the year.
Is there something in statute that absolutely says the date and time that an evaluation needs to happen? Because I'm not familiar with that. So in my opinion, if we're being proactive with an, with an evaluation, we should probably be doing it in March or April as a yearly evaluation, not a mid-year, a yearly. Because since the contract ends the end of June, if something were to happen, then we have time to prepare ourselves to look, you know, for...
Well, the mid-year, the mid-year could help with that. The, the reason why we did it after June 30th in the past is so everybody had, you know, you could look back and see, like Jen's list, and the other superintendents had a list of project facilities maintenance, so you could see what was getting done. So when that came out on the evaluation, you could say, okay, well, yeah, good job, you know, hit all the marks. So that's why we did it at that time, because you can look back at the whole year and everything that was done, and the budget, how it, how the budget looked. I mean, obviously, if it flopped, um, are you gonna know if it's flopping in March, or are you gonna know at year end? Well, the month, you get that, those numbers coming in after June, so you finalize the budget, and you could see that. And then you got the new budget to look at. Um, so there was just a combination of things is why it was done that way.
Historically, it's been, historically, it's been at after the end of the year, or at the time of a contract renewal.
But I'm saying, we're behind the ball if we're doing it in July, August, September.
Correct. This process technically should have been, it technically should have been started last November, December, but it was not done. And we didn't do an evaluation last year at all either. That's why we're trying to get through it, to get back on the right track, to set that going forward, so we get that cycle back going again.
So will Jen be able to see what each one of us puts down as our...
I believe so, because it's data.
Or is it gonna get filtered through you?
It's a summative review.
It's a summit, yeah.
But I can get every board member's, whatever individuals.
The individuals, yep.
Yep, the individuals. I put out a, I'm hoping it was a nice request to all of you. Nice and please.
Yep.
I mean, I have no problem doing reviews. I think that's how we gain, you know, knowledge on how we can do things better and what things we need to work on. But I just think we need to get the timing of this better situated, as far as...
Correct.
What, what, what we're doing. I mean, this is kind of new to all of us. It hasn't been done in years, so we need to kind of hold down on what we need to do. I have, honestly, I don't see anything wrong with Jen and how she's done things and how she's communicated with things. I'm not afraid to tell good things and, about her, and say, hey, we need to work on a couple of things. I think that's open communication, and that's, that's what our constituents deserve. I don't think our, just constituents deserve to not have these things discussed, so...
So you guys see this as an extension of what was started in April? I saw it as two different ones. Maybe that's my mistake. If it's two different ones, I don't think that's necessary.
Well, I don't think it is. We didn't really give her a formal review. I mean, in my opinion. But...
It's the carry on, it's the finishing of that one. Because, yeah, like I said, technically, you should be starting to do your mid-year, mid-year in November, December, January. We never did that. And normally, like you said, either, yeah, you could do CASs and say, you know, if you are at the end of a contract, move it up a little earlier. If you're in the middle, you could do it later. There is some leniency, but we haven't done one in years. So no, it's a continuation of what happened. That's why I asked Jen, you know, is there anything else you'd like to add to the presentation she gave in April?
I think this all falls upon our strategic plan anyway, so I mean, that's...
Yep. We can have that in there as well when we go to set goals. Yep. Yep. We can have that in there as well when we go to set goals. Yep. If there's no further discussion, if board members would send their, submit their things by August 1st, that way we can kind of get everything compiled together for the review in August. Next is discussion of the eval process for the fiscal year 2223. And that is the one that Tim sent the old version of it.
Did I get that?
I don't know. I just sent it to Teresa, I guess, so.
No, you said, I think you sent it to everybody. Otherwise Jen, I can forward it.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Jen, do you want me to forward it to you real quick?
If I can get service.
All right. It says sending, so I might take a minute. There it goes. So Tim, do you want to talk about this one? Cause?
Yeah, it's the way we used to do it. If you guys, I guess, pull it up and, or if you've already looked at it. There's just a lot of normal areas that, that get covered. You know, as far as the day-to-day, the facility stuff, how the policy we create and approve gets handled. Just a lot of different aspects. So the goal, the goal-setting thing is, is fine, but then to me it just, that's very, I guess, basic when I look at just the goals. If, if there's only a couple of goals. You know, to really, to really, for the board to really look at it and say, "Okay, what direction are we going? Where do we need to be? How does that all tie in together?" I mean, do we need to work on facilities even more than we are? So that's, that's, that's why this evaluation form worked really good. So I just thought about combining the two together. And doing both. Takes more time, obviously, but it worked good in the past.
It's pretty similar to what I was used to, but.
Yeah, it's probably the same. It was that one when I was on the board, when Steve Soli was here first, so.
I think as a board, we can feed off of this form and utilize the other forms as well. But at the same time, there's difference between goals and objectives. And I think we need to kind of set forth a, a standard to give Jen some objectives to kind of abide by. Instead of giving her, I don't know, pretty much nothing to go by. So I'm learning a lot in, in some of my management courses that setting goals and objectives is a necessity to move forward in the right direction. So I think we need to kind of establish that with our strategic plan and kind of give her guidance with that.
And that's where the goals, I think that's where they kind of looked at the goals more too of tying that in with your strategic plan, you know, so that's why I think they're both, they both have something to offer, I guess. So I wanted to get your guys' feedback on it and see what you thought.
In order for us to have an effective evaluation, though, I think we need to have those objectives listed plain and in sight to kind of give her guidance with that. Because she doesn't know what all of us want as board members.
Correct. And that could be, that could be one of the goals that is, yeah, work, you know, continue to work towards their strategic plan or things like that. So that could be just one of, you know, cause like last year was with the HVAC. You know, that was kind of, you know, continue working towards the HVAC. We could have the same thing as, you know, one goal would be starting, you know, to work and process through the strategic plan. Yep. So are you thinking kind of a combination of both of this one and the old one?
Yeah, I mean, the old one I like is because it's kind of more dummy-proof kind of thing. I know it's, the, the new one is kind of a broader expansion.
I'll take some time to look at and I can let you know.
But yeah, I, I mean, I mean, it doesn't hurt to do both of them, I guess. I have nothing to hide, so.
When I think that's important too, to recognize that similar to what we do with teachers and support staff, these are formative assessments. These aren't assessments, "Oh, do you like me or not?" That's not what an evaluation is. I know a lot of people want that. I get that. That is not at all what the board does for a superintendent. It is, it's about setting goals and am I reaching the goals? And do the goals after the year need to be tweaked for the next year or new goals set? It's not about, "Hey Jen, I don't like you because you did this to me." That's not what we do. That's not what professionals do. That's not what leadership does. That's not how we set the stage for other staff.
And that's not what this old evaluation is.
No, no, I haven't even looked at it, Tim, so I don't know.
It's, it's not. It just breaks down many different areas. From facilities, the policy to all sorts of stuff.
I would just like to see the process be one month or one month and then the next month can be over.
Well, maybe.
Four months long.
This is something that, you know, we've only got a table of five here tonight. Do we want to wait and say, "Have the discussion next month when the rest of the board members are present?" Since we're only five of seven?
That's fair.
Same again.
Okay. All right. So we will table the eval process for the 2223 school year to bring back for next month. All right. Next is principal report.
All right. Well, oh boy, no solid place. So next month, you're probably gonna get a more bulk of things. I was making a list last couple of weeks of things that, so in August, I have at least 20 things that I start sending out to the staff. I don't know if you guys just want me to share, talk about it, or if you guys need that stuff too, but everywhere from schedules, elementary, high school, to calendars, to bell schedules, advisors, handbooks, committees, curriculum cycle, detention cycle, emergency drills, all that stuff. I, I send that stuff to teachers every year. They, now it's just a running joke when they get 4,000 emails. I don't put them in one. I like to break them up into something like that. So a lot of that stuff is, I'm almost done updating everything for going into next year. I like to try to stay along with those handbooks to make sure we don't, after the first reading, to make sure I don't, we need to change anything for the second one. So you get a lot of those things. Couple of other things with teachers as we're trying to, I know I've, over the last two months, things might've got confusing or off track or, or things like that. So I have some emails. I've been working with MDE to make sure we're on track with all of our teachers that we need to. So for our, we have four teachers that I'm gonna talk about. Mel Lunning will be our high school English teacher. She will have a tier one because she has an English degree and a short-term sub-license. So she will start out with a tier one and then when she enrolls, she's accepted into college, but when she's going to enroll in the spring semester, then she can apply for tier two. So then we'll be set. Okay? Chrissy is out-of-field placement. She'll be our middle school English. Cause obviously she's licensed, so she'll be just an out-of-field placement. Sean Kennedy will be our middle school science and might have ninth grade science as well. He'll be a tier two since he has an out-of-state license. He has to take a test and if he can, to take a test to get a tier three. So we're good on if, so a tier two for sure. Potential tier three if he passes the science MTLEs. Nick, this will be his second year. He is just a biology degree. We got him a tier one. He'll be another tier one. He could have up to three tier ones. Okay, that's what the state says. You can, you can get, you can apply for three of them. In the past, it, you guys, there used to be variances. The state would say the same thing. You could get three. Well, we used to have a fax teacher that I was on five. So there's, there's points where if you even post those things and you can't get them there, they give you, now they're called emergency tiers, so. Well, I'm not worried about that now. Nick will be on year two of a tier one. We're gonna have a discussion with Nick here in the next year or two of, are we going back to school? What our plan is, things like that. So we can, we can do that as well. So he'll be our high school STEM and actually, he's gonna take the biology class, which obviously is his background. So he will, he will have that. So any questions or clarification on the four teachers right now that are moving? Chrissy is going to.
I have one more.
Okay.
The question related to Ms. Pringle. She was a point six teacher and she had a license, so she would fall under the EA contract.
She was there, even though she was limited to what she could.
Retirement doesn't matter. It's all about payroll then, at that point.
Yeah, she was, she was just a point.
Nothing with contracts.
She could be full time.
Okay.
Nothing with contracts.
So Chrissy will enroll and go back to school and get her English degree. So she's gonna eventually have her English license. So, and if Sean passes the MTL, he'll have a science license. Mel, once she apply, once she enrolls, then she'll get her English license. So really our only unknown, and I haven't sat down with Nick, so it's not fair. It's, we haven't just sat down and had that long conversation about his plans are for the future. He is gonna come back next year. So that's kind of the plan for the four teachers that we have that would not be in their field of licensure. Does that make sense with any, any questions? I know we were moving and shuffling and just so you know, so the tier ones, we do have to post every year. Nick's actually was, his position was posted in February with no applicants. And then all the other ones were posted, the 60 days that MDE stays on.
And just a friendly reminder too, when we posted it the first time, and if you look back at your board notes from me, we did post with the $5,000 signing bonus for, you know, a licensed teacher, cause that's in only the EA contract. No other contract. Well, we pulled it and hired Nick. He did not get that because he's not a licensed teacher. He's on a very separate one-page contract that says basically what his name is, what his salary is. He's under the teacher's contract. However, he cannot receive benefits like TRA, Teacher Retirement Association benefits, like Erin and I received, because he's not a licensed teacher. So anything that a licensed teacher receives because they're licensed, he cannot. He cannot.
And that was the question I had. I mean, if he's on a separate contract, what is in that contract? Cause we've never seen it.
Yep. It's just salary essentially and any benefits within the EA, but not, not licensed benefits. I don't know how else to say that, but not anything that where it would identify a license. Like the biggest thing I can say is like Teacher Retirement Association.
Okay.
You know, that gets pulled by the district and we contribute to people's retirement. So that would be one. Absolutely not. I mean, you brought up a great email and I apologize if my last statement was, "Please let me help you," cause I'm not, I wasn't totally understanding what you were saying. And hopefully I clarified. I hope Erin did tonight too. Licensing is hard. It's hard. But keep in mind too, and Teresa brought up something in her email, compliance checks. It's a good point. And if we have those, we have multiples just in-house. If we do something wrong with licensing, EA will grieve it. Our teacher association will grieve it. We do have the STAR report, which now you guys, yay, get to read that about that if you want to. MDE will come down on us every year. MAS A, our guiding institution, requests all contracts or a synopsis of contracts that we have to send out. And so does MSBA, as many of you are aware of too, cause you're part of that guiding organization. So we send that off. Also, keep in mind too, Erin and I have been doing this for a long time. And so we kind of know tiering and licensing, we went to school for this. We're not gonna come forward if something is naughty to you. We'll figure it out and then come forward. That, you hired us to do that job and we'll do it. One thing too, please note that Tim had made a request a couple of months ago that I think, I think maybe you requested it last month, Tim. I, correct me if I'm wrong here on this, that he wants us to come forward and I like this idea. And we'll continue to do this, but last month you noticed that we are bringing salaries forward, regardless if you're certified or not. That was done about four or five years ago. We're gonna bring that back. I didn't know the board wanted that. It was requested. We're doing it without question. And I like that idea. We don't mind doing that. We don't mind doing that. Keep in mind, if there's a mistake like the 25 cents, we'll come back the next month. But yeah, ask those questions. We, we're not hiding anything. We, we aren't hiding anything. We're being as truthful as we can, cause we don't have anything to hide. I mean, I, you know.
That's where my question came from, because when we hired Nick, we didn't know, we didn't, we did not know that he did not have a teacher's license. So when we brought, when he was initially hired.
And I could clarify that, cause when I say degree for us in education, I kept saying biology degree. And for many of you, you may have thought, "Is that a license?" What does she mean? So it's the language piece?
Correct. So when we find out that he doesn't have a license, then we don't, then we don't know that there's a, say, a separate contract that we've never seen, we have no clue what's going on.
As a matter of fact, we have him in Erin's office right now, cause we're working on this year since he was approved. So if you wanna see him, you're welcome to. Board members are supposed to go into personnel files, but you can ask me and I can go in there with you. I can show you almost everything except HIPAA things and
Correct.
those things. So.
Just a little bit more on the tier, just the tier one. That's the same as like when we did the variances. And I think past practice was when we did people on variances, they just signed the master contract. And then the, then the business manager would take care of all that stuff you're asking, like they get this, they don't get that. Which leads us into a great, we've had good conversations the last couple of days of contracts and because people have asked for those over the.
Bring that up tonight.
Yeah, I'm not gonna steal her thunder. But we don't, that's a good point. People have, they sign an initial, like the teacher stuff, and then they don't really ever sign one. And that, we're, we're talking about, we probably should start.
And you guys have done that for years.
Yeah. So we should get into a practice of everybody in every position. Not only so you guys know, but so we know, or the, you know, the teachers always don't know.
Employees know.
So it's just been a past practice that probably wasn't maybe a good practice, but it's just that, the way it was, so. So your points brought up and then great conversation. So then we talked with Chrissy, had some other good conversations with Jen, has a whole bunch of stuff. But I, but I just wanted to make sure I know that one meeting was pretty, that day it all switched. So I wanted to make sure you guys were clear on who had what. So I wanted to come back to that, just so you guys know that stuff. And then the contracts, I think we need to clear that up across the board, so.
Also, keep in mind too, with tier one, I know we've talked a lot about tiering. Tier one is not a continuing contract. So our STEM teacher who we've been talking about tonight, he's under tier one. So every single year until he's licensed and has keyword, an approved license from MDE, that position, not him, that position will be approved to keep being posted and, and rehired. And he can reapply if he so chooses, but he has to reapply. So just really keep that in the back of your, tier one is messy. It works and thank goodness we have tiering in Minnesota for sure. We are in dire need of certified teachers. We know that, but tiering helps us a lot. And, and frankly, like we said last time, and Tiffany Lewison knows this all too well. If you don't do things right with licensing, MDE will let you know. So we have done everything right with licensing throughout, at least my time here anyway, and I'm, I'm confident prior to me too, I'm sure. But we do have a lot of people in place and institutional programming that will nail us if we don't, if we don't do something right.
And that's why I asked the question about doing the in-house compliance check. I mean, cause we found out last month that, you know, Mel didn't have a, you know, a contract. So it's, you know.
And we're gonna go look for that. We cannot seem to find it, but it was during some pretty significant transitions and other issues going on. So it could be somewhere. Cause I would like that moving forward with that student services. I, my assumption was we're just gonna use that same one with the, that position, cause it, it was her position. That's what we wanna do. But I think there was some transition and weird things going on that we don't always wanna talk about, but during that time.
That's why I wanted to make the comment up, you know, we have to, you know, MDE has compliance checks for us. Do we need to have an internal one to make sure that we have everything that we need to make sure?
I'll get to that later during, during my report.
Okay.
A thought for you guys.
Couple more things. We do have an ECFE position opening. I'm working on some in-house teachers that actually have the right degree. If I can convince one or two of them, may, we're thinking of maybe doing a couple of fall events and then the breakfast with Santa and then a couple of spring. My wife has always done the teaching portion. We're trying to get that adult portion. So I have two people that I'm working on that I think. So I'd like to get ECFE back up and running. I think that's a great thing to have here. So I'm working on that. We haven't any outside people apply for it. So we're working on some of the, I have two people in-house that actually have the right degree for that. We talked about, oh, kindergarten, just so you guys know, we are, I just got confirmation from LeAnn. 26 paperwork for 26 plus the three in the other room for a total of 29. You guys approved us last month, so I'm going to post this week for a kindergarten teacher. That'll be a one-year kindergarten and it'll take it year by year based on what's going on for that. I said a million things, or that. Any questions? For me? Hopefully I cleared up some of the things with the licensure stuff and things. Like I said, you're gonna.
And ask those questions. They're great, cause it is a very, very hard thing to even talk about, let alone understand or define. And we surely never wanna push you off or feel like, "Oh God, we don't wanna talk to you or have you asked questions?" No, we want you to. Hence my, every two weeks I send you emails with information. You know, it's. You know, it's, you guys are all leaders. You know information is coming your way. You may not like some of it, but at the end of the day, you're getting it. You're getting the information.
So like I said, next month, with some of the new tweaks, like I said, to the schedule, I'll explain. I'll send out the curriculum cycle, observation cycles, all those things, and explain. If you guys, I don't know, in the past, I've done both. I've sent the board everything that I send the teachers, and then I've not, because I don't know if you guys cared. So if you guys want all the stuff I send, let me know. I can, I don't know what the legal, like, I think I could send you guys everything, you just can't reply to me or something, whatever, whatever your board rules are. So if you want them, Teresa, if you want to check with the board members, if you guys want them.
And say if you guys want them, let's just say, just reach out to Erin and say yes or no. Or just, you know, if you want them, just say yes, say no. If he doesn't hear from you, then the answer's probably just no.
Okay. And like I said, I'm going to talk about everything next month anyways.
And if I feel it's important stuff you should know anyway, even if you say no, I'm going to send it to you. You know, like the Marzano staff emails, I thought that was really important for you to see our change in teacher evaluations. So I wanted you guys to have that in front of you. To me, that's a really important thing that we have in our district. So things like that, if I feel it's important, I'll send it to you anyway. So then it's legal.
Two last things. One, I'm hoping to do another Alice drill in the fall. I thought, I think that's great for our community to do together, and we have some new staff. And then the second thing is our RCD. I just got invited to be part of a nationwide blog, one of the first ones that we are going to, a guy setting up through that company, and we'll talk about, we're doing it at our schools, and then they'll broadcast that through the entire country, and we'll be, kind of get a little bit more PR. Little old Leroy's doing out there with some good things. So more to come, but that's kind of more of clearing things up for you guys tonight. A lot of new stuff for the new year will be in August. I think that's it for me. Let's see, has got any questions?
All right, thank you, Erin. Jen? All right, so let's see here, a couple of things. Many of you received the MSA, MSBA mailing. There are tons of great webinars up and coming this summer. So they have one on July 21st, the 20th, 27th, August 4th, September 8th, September 9th. Just a lot of good stuff. If you did not get that email, let me know. I believe it came yesterday or today. I can't remember, but anyway, let me know, and we can sign you up for that. Or some of them are free, so you can just log in from the links provided, but there's good stuff there. Keep in mind, we are still looking for coaches and officials. Head girls, or head JV girls basketball, head junior high girls basketball, head junior high boys, basketball assistant, junior high girls basketball assistant, junior high boys basketball, and an assistant junior high football coach. We do have those positions posted. We have other opportunities, too, in our athletic department, such as officials, volleyball and football, especially, speaking of athletics, our parent and athlete fall sports meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 2nd, so we'll get that information out soon. Hard to believe we're already talking about fall stuff. I just did my email today and talked with Erin and Kristi about what I needed to add to my fall welcome back, so it was kind of crazy talking about that. Concussion baseline testing will be Wednesday, August 10th. Fall season start is Monday, August 15th already. Go football. LO football suites fundraiser is tomorrow from 5:00 to 9:00 also, don't forget that. All this stuff, of course, has been communicated out, but if you need more information, just get ahold of Mr. Carrier, Mr. Hungerhold, or myself. A couple of other things, for August, also prepare for our auditing service engagement letter. We thought we would maybe have it. We had our fingers crossed here in July, but all sorts of schools and auditing services are backed up, and so you should be getting it in August, so look for that. We'll go with the same institution for our audit. Let's see, also, our CLA business management service, I did get the engagement letter at 5:00 Friday, so I did not put it on the board agenda. I wanted it by noon, I think I said in my email to you guys, and we didn't get it till 5:00, so I thought, forget it. We can wait till August. I'll review it, look at it comprehensively for you. If there's anything out of the ordinary, I would let you know in my email, as I've done before, but plan for potential approval in August on that. As I said earlier, fall in-service, fall staff in-service and workshop, we are working on that every day that we're together, talking about what we're going to do, things we need to go over and things like that, so you'll be well aware of all the activities going on in our district. I'll email that off again. Part of my big job in the summer is really working with MDE and finalizing tons of reports through our serves portal, as well as all our financial portals, and disciplinary portals, things like that for MDE. So that is done. Now I've started the new reporting here, starting July, I think I started doing it July 10th, so we're good to go. We're all compliant as a district in everything. Another shout-out, I know we did it earlier, to Tanya, our preschool teacher for receiving that early learning scholarship. That's another $15,000 for our kids to come and receive quality instruction at such little ages. We will continue to write those grants and get them, if we can, every year, so that was pretty exciting times for us to get that. Let's see here, oh, state fire marshal came in here within the last month and came back with the report. It will be available in the district office anytime you want to see it. We talked about it tonight at our building and grounds meeting. Report came back great again. We're doing very well, all in compliance. Couple little things, like don't, you know, don't plug into a wall with a two-pronged, you know, cord or something like that. All fixable items that we can take care of. But otherwise, overall, excellent. Same thing with our pool inspection report. Excellent. We just got that yesterday or the day before. I can't remember, but excellent news again. Again, we'll have that all in the district office for you, too. But if you ever want to see him, let me know. I can always scan him to you, too. Let's see here. So Erin mentioned this a little bit, he's planning an Alice drill, so that's kind of our safety drill when it comes to active shooters. Erin and I also are going to be in contact with Eagle Ridge Tactical. They have been to this district before, and really assessed how safe our building is outside and inside, so we're going to be moving forward with that again. Also, our building and grounds committee, we're going to start adding an agenda item there on our running agenda about safety in our building. And so really talk about that regularly and how important that is. Many of you are, I sent an email off way back in June, on June 1st, to the staff, and I forwarded to all of you on the importance of safety even during the summer months. So we need to continue to prioritize that with our students. As a matter of fact, next Wednesday, Erin and I are walking around the entire building, inside and out, checking every single classroom door to make sure they lock correctly, they don't stick, checking windows, and then all external doors, too. We're going to start basically a spreadsheet of what needs changes, what doesn't. We're going to ask Eagle Ridge Tactical about things like that, too. So a lot coming about here, and I'll continue to bring this up to you and keep you abreast of any, you know, safety emails I send off to staff or things like that. But for me, that is a huge priority and continues to be my goal of getting word out there that that's important to us, and we're going to deal with things. And we also have an outstanding relationship with Mauer County Sheriff's Department, and so they regularly come in and check with us. If I text one of them, they will show up just to walk around the building and say hi and have that presence, so they've been wonderful. So just know that's, that's going to continue into this year and even, even more so, especially with just kind of the climate of, of our, our nation right now and what's going on, so we want to prioritize that. Erin brought this up earlier. He didn't steal my thunder, because I appreciate that. Thank you. So talking about all these contract things and all the good things that are going on, and we are being extremely, now, keep this in mind, too, when I say we're being extremely transparent with our community, there are times we can't. I'm going to be very, very transparent with you now. Erin and I are under a certain level of confidentiality that we can't share things. So many of you may say, well, I heard this from somebody else, or I heard this. You can. You probably didn't hear it from us, and that's a good thing. So I want to really be clear when I say, yep, we want to be transparent, but we also sometimes can't be. We have to be very careful, very careful. But one of the things we can be transparent about is pay and certain issues within a contract. We can't HIPAA related, of course, and other things, but contracts we can. So in talking with Kristi the last few days, and this test relates to her CLA contract coming forward, okay? I want just the board to think about this, but I'm going to bring you more information forward, so I'm just planning a seat tonight. More information will come in an email from me, but then also at the August meeting with the CLA contract. Your thoughts on a part-time payroll HR person? Where they solely, solely would work on contracts? So with Erin and his committee, that is his main duty, you know, during, during the season. He would come to me, I would approve whatever he brings forward potentially to go to HR. The contracts would be created, payroll would be talked about, insurance discussions. I know Kristi really gets bombarded, especially now that September 1st is coming. I have run some numbers, and I will share this with you in an email. No doubt, CLA is very expensive. If we added one more day to Kristi, that would be an awful lot as compared to outsourcing just a part-time, only contract payroll person. That's it. The majority of her time, she really is spending a lot with that. So I'll get that to you, something to consider, but just wait for my email, and it'll look like this, some of the data.
Would you kind of, does it show, does it say, like, how many hours Kristi actually does payroll and kind of all that stuff?
I can get that, and she doesn't know. I've already asked her for that. Today I asked her for it, because that was kind of just the last thing I thought about, but she said it's significant, very significant. So I don't know off the top of my, top of my head, though. So, but I'll get that all to you. I also sent an email off to some regional superintendents, not all of them, because there's quite a few of us, and some schools are bigger than ours, but if they have a payroll person slash HR person, what is their salary? What other duties are falling under there? So I will always get you information on that, too. Again, a thought to process. I'm not suggesting right now we have it, because we do need more data, and I want more data to come back to me. That also leads to my next thing. This summer, I would like to create a folder for all new hires related to their contract. Let's say they're hired as a teacher. We give them a copy of their contract. We give them information how to log into our smart ER system. You know, it's all laid out for them. So it's super easy, it's welcoming. I might steal some pencils and put in the folder, or a t-shirt or something, too, but something to really, so they, maybe even do a six-to-eight hour presentation with them through our HR payroll department potentially, or myself, to really get them going on those little things in life. You know, you are now receiving pay from us or insurance, whatever, this is how you deal with it now. So I'm working on that, too, and hopefully that'll, that'll come this fall. That'll come this fall, because, well, it has to, the new contract starts in, in August for teachers, so. And everybody else, there's that. Couple other things, you know, I was walking around, and as you all know, you all know where I live, and I live by a superintendent, and I live by three teachers, if you can believe it, and some of them are coaches, and I was talking to them one day, and I asked them, you know, and then one is a, actually, the business professional, one of the business professionals at Mayo Clinic, and I asked them, you know, when their, when does their team, in their opinion, become great? And they all said differently, in a different way, and they agreed with each other, when we served each other instead of ourselves. We before me. And, and I want, I know there's a lot of things out there, people upset with me about certain things, you know, whether it's LED project, HVAC project. I heard some negative things about our budget, which is really good. You know, certain meetings with community members, things like that. If you're hearing things, please come talk to me. Please come talk to me. We need to work together. I'm a leader, you hired me to be a leader. Yep, I'm not going to make you happy all the time with some of my decisions, but not only am I educated, but I'm experienced in this position, successfully experienced in this position, to help you. If I haven't proven it in two years, I don't know how I cannot. I don't know what else to do. But there's some personal things out there that, that just because I stood up to you or did something, that you should expect that from your superintendent. I'm not always going to be soft. I'm not always going to agree, and leaders should be okay with that. Leaders should be okay with that. So that's what I'm asking you tonight, related to my eval, that be fair, just because I disagreed on something, doesn't mean it's right to be cut down in an evaluation. My evaluation is based off the goals and other things that I have done for this district, comprehensively and collaboratively with others. But I do really, really hope, and I'll, I'll send an email out to reinforce this, because we do have two, two members gone, but I'd like to meet individually with board members, if possible, just to say, hey, what have you heard out there? Let's clear it up, because everything I have heard, I have documentation of. You know, as I suggested tonight, I have a text message about a mid-year evaluation with SMEC. Well, it's not true. They've never had one. And so I just want to clear things up, so if you do have questions, concerns, whatever it is, talk to me. Talk to me. Don't do it behind my back. That's not how we operate. That's not how professionals operate, and it surely isn't how leaders operate. I come forward all the time with quality information that I believe is accurate and researched, and I also have formed an awful lot of collaborative committees here where feedback is given. And so I'm not alone in this effort, that we need to continuously work together. That's what it comes down to. So the language we use with each other needs to be that. It's critical in, in moving organizations forward in essentially a democratic way, as you mentioned earlier. You know, it is. We need to work together, not apart. That's it for me tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Jen? Otherwise, we'll move on to school board committees and comments. Community at ECFE, we have not met. We will look to meet. Cass, help me out here. Is it Monday before the board meeting that we're going to meet?
I'm not on community at...
Oh, that's right, you have to. Chad, wrong one. Yep, we'll look to meet again in August, and we'll start looking at planning classes and things for the kids for the fall. Otherwise, that's all I had for that.
Well, and hopefully I can get you some, an adult.
Yes.
Teacher.
And Erin will hopefully have someone to start something.
Can I suggest, Teresa or, well, well, Deb's not here, but Chad, could you guys on your media agenda maybe put down the pool? Just as a running agenda, just if there's any items, or if there is an item and you need Lindsay at the next meeting, she can address you.
Okay.
You know, at least then.
Yep, because I know LeAnn, LeAnn usually the one that sends out, you know, all the emails and reminders and stuff, so Lindsay, I'll let LeAnn know to start tagging you on the emails when they come out.
That'd be good. Probably talk about after she goes, because I have a live read that I'm going to be told on October or something. Yeah, we can do it that way.
Finance committee has not met.
You will be meeting when the audit comes out. So when the auditors are here, Teresa, is it the second to the last day that they're here, that they meet?
It's either the second to the last or the third to the last. I can't, it's right towards the end.
So it'll be Teresa and Deb. So we will bring them in, and they can report out, but it is all about the audits, the lovely audit.
We go through the giant book together, and then we, they'll present, you know, the rest of the board with the snippet rundown, so you don't have to sit there and try to go through the book. Meet and confer, our next meeting's date is set for August 17th. Chad, do you have anything else? No? MSBA, Jen stole mine earlier, I was going to let you guys know that, yeah, there's a lot of webinars, a lot of information that came out with MSBA in the last couple of weeks, especially legislation stuff.
And I'll do a synopsis every once in a while.[1741.02] And I'll do a synopsis every once in a while, you guys maybe get sick of those, but if I feel there are ones that directly impact the district, I cut and paste them out. There's some that, you know, only affect the Iron Range schools. I will not cut and paste those for you. You don't need to know that, but the other things I'll do.
State High School League.
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay, Scholarship Committee. Okay, Certified Negotiators, we are looking, what is it, September, October, next again to meet with Erin for Erin's contract. Non-certified negotiators.
So, at our, Tim, you're the only other negotiator here. So jump in, but at our meeting, when we finalize with that, their committee and our committee, the plan was to come forward at this meeting for approval. Well, they have not voted.
Are you talking about MSEA?
MSEA, I'm sorry, non-certified, yes. MSEA, so they are going to vote as a union, bring it back to me, their vote, and then hopefully in August, it'll come forward. Keep in mind, when that comes forward, similar to our EA contract, I send you the contract with highlighted changes, so I put literally highlights in there, and a one-page Word document of the changes. So you can look duly at both. Some of it's just housekeeping stuff such as dates and names, whatever, but you'll see, just like I did the EA contract, just bullet points of what was changed. So hopefully, that will be August. We hope for our business manager's sake, it's also August, because she has to do back pay. So anyway, and then also our individual contracts, we did, we were scheduled for today, but for two reasons. One, one of our board negotiators, of course, is not here tonight, and that's 50% of our board committee, so our quorum is missing. And then also, oftentimes, these individual contracts, they do like to wait until MSEA is done, and so it just makes sense that we wait for them.
Next, we'll go on to SMAC. I'll give you guys a quick rundown. All of the invoices for member districts have been done. As you guys see, there was a pretty good-sized SMAC bill that went out this month. What else? Business managers have also completed the reading of the billing process, so that will go to Jen in the cabinet here this coming month. The board will also hopefully approve it here in July, so that we will be set for billing for next year. I know I told you guys many times that SMAC wants to do their own transportation, and we're looking at building a garage. However, Dan sent us an update. They're still looking for a path because of the slope of the property, the presented plans are not feasible, so we're, that part of it's still kind of on hold. There were 75 students in credit recovery. ESY, or, excuse me, SMAC Academy was huge this year, but they had 110 kids in June, 126 in July, and 93 in August. And the SMAC Academy is for any kid. You don't have to be a SMAC student or a title student, it's open for all kids, and I know my boys went, they thought it was awesome, and they'll go again here in August. We do have a Level 3 cards position posted for a paraprofessional here in Leroy, so if you guys know a para for the cards program, we will need another paraprofessional.
Maybe more than one.
We got numbers.
This, this only tells me one. I know at one point Denise said maybe two, maybe three. This only says one. So I guess, you know what?
Sometimes there's negatives with increased enrollment. This is one of them. This is one of them.
So if you know anyone that wants to be a para, send them our way.
Yes.
We need more staff.
Yep, otherwise, like I said, we finished the strategic planning with Gail out of MSBA. It was, it was really good. You learned a lot about the district. You learned that, kind of, you know, how to look at things. The board will be set to approve this for a final reading on the 21st, and I think that's all I have. The rest is just a few little Dan notes. Next is district policy. We weren't able to meet this month, so we'll bring everything back in August. Systems accountability, we touched a little bit on earlier tonight with, you know, using the strategic plan to help us make sure that we are doing the world's best workforce to the best of our ability for our students. And last but not least, buildings and grounds.
We did meet tonight before the meeting. We didn't make any recommendations on anything really, but we talked about floors in the locker rooms need to be redone. Floor in the old weight room to make that into a classroom, that's probably going to happen. We've got a, we've got a one estimate on, on the carpet squares of approximately 2,300 bucks on that. Talked about the possibility of moving the concession stand area in, in the building for like basketball games, volleyball games and so forth. We did find out that the stage curtain does not need to be replaced. Found that out from the fire marshal, I guess, when he was here. And we can just have that repaired instead if we, if we want to go through with that, so. And we talked about replacing those old windows that have never been replaced, so hopefully we can get a code on that pretty soon. That's about it.
You guys have homework to do, though. You're not talking about the homework assignment.
Yeah, we got our list.
I already forgot the homework.
Prioritize the list.
The naughty kids.
Yep.
Yes, we've asked the committee to, not the chief, sorry. You guys remember this big document, it's getting bigger. We've asked the committee to prioritize in their own minds, or if they talk to community members, whatever they want. We are going to, at our August 16th meeting, we are gonna talk about prioritizing the next three to five years in terms of facilities, you know, what's needed, what's not. Can we take stuff off and wait, or not wait? But what should we do? And this'll, of course, the whole comprehensive document will come to the board. You know, I send it off as regularly as I can. Sometimes when there isn't changes, I, I try not to beat a dead horse already, but, but yeah, that's gonna be our focus. They have some homework to really look at what you guys want to do in the next couple of years, what you've heard from other board members even, or, again, community and kids. So that'll come forward. If I may, can I add, this says building and grounds as a committee, can I add the word safety to that? Would the board mind if we start also talking about it as safety? Because I think it's really important, we, to our constituency, have them recognize that is no doubt a priority of ours. And as I said earlier, we're putting it on the, a running agenda item, safety items, concerns, challenges, conflicts, whatever it is. But I'd really like it to be called that too, so if there is a safety item that would come up. So for example, if Eagle Ridge comes, the building and grounds committee would be invited to attend, because it would be our safety committee too. IEA stuff is all safety, and that usually runs through building and grounds too. So if that's all right, I'll change the agenda a little bit. I forgot to bring it up to the committee last night, or earlier, and that was literally an hour ago.
We talk about safety, it's just not part of our name.
Right.
Kind of treat the same way with the pool. We'll just throw safety in with us.
Just put it on the agenda.
One question I forgot to ask, how was the LED project going?
Good. Remember, August, it needs to be done, needs to be done. I did get a call from Adam, the main guy, and of course, everything's on site and they're busy changing out. He did ask if the district would like to take before and after pictures, because he would like to highlight Leroy Oslander School District as a district who, hey, look at the cool things they're doing in this very small community, learning community. And I said, heck, yeah, we'll take pictures and send them off and highlight Leroy. So, yeah, yeah, he just emailed me late last week, I think on Friday or Saturday. So we'll get some pictures out, but otherwise, yes, it's moving along well. So far, no hiccups, anything major, they said they'd give me a call. I've only had positive check-ins, like, hey, just making sure they're there, like literally July 5th. They called and said they better be there, so, otherwise, it's good.
All right, we'll move on to district calendar update. I won't hit all of these, because we go over to October, we'll just hit August and beginning of September. August 9th is the policy committee meeting at 8:00 AM. August 16th is the school board meeting at 6:00 PM. August 29th through the 31st is staff development days, there's no school. September 5th is no school. September 6th is the middle school, high school, first day of school. September 6th through 7th will be the elementary conferences, and September 8th is the elementary first day of school.
Part of our, our communications too, for this fall, will be, you know, our, our breakfast invite, we talked about today already, and I always attach, again, send off our school district calendar to our staff, to you guys, our community will see it too, you know, we'll put it on Facebook and our website too. So even things like this are, are recognized out there too.
If there's nothing else, we would look to make a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.